Okay, folks, it's six o'clock. It's PM, it's time for our caucus. We have five items this evening for action under new business. I would request these items be read by one, Richard Wood, with one reading, if that's okay with council. Thank you. Start with A, Mr. Tisch. Okay. And B, Mr. Dragich. And C, Mr. Morbe?
Yep.
Item D, Mayor?
Got it.
And item E, with Mr. Tisch, would you add one too?
Sure.
Great. Okay, are there any other revisions to the agenda as presented this evening? If not, will you stand up for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, in the name of God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk can call the roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Your co-sar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, under four, you've all received the minutes from the November 5th council meeting. Are there any revisions to those minutes? If not, may stand approved in a record. Item five is reading communications. Mr. Tisch?
I have none.
Okay. Mr. Dragich?
I have none.
Mayor, co-sar.
I have none.
Mr. Morbe?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Reno?
Yeah, one piece of communication from Columbia Gas of Ohio. And just kind of reiterates what I brought up at the last meeting. I had received a phone call previously, but they sent out a notice that should be mailed out to all of the customers in the south east quadrant of the city, that they're suspending the construction project in the Court Street and Broad Street Campfield area. And they'll be back out in the spring for, they'll be restoring everything, getting everything to rough grade, but in the spring they'll have to come back and do some seeding and restoration. And there's also more work yet to be done as well in that area. So they're not done with the project, and they're not leaving us in the manner that it was left, basically because of the weather.
Okay. Very good. Okay, under reports of committees and the city manager, Mr. Dragich?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Mayor?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Morbe?
Just a report that our firefighters that were injured in the accident on the turnpike are recovering, no serious injuries, and should be back to work. And the fire truck is being assessed and perhaps maybe even replaced. It might be in a condition that it's not worth putting back into service, so those are all things that are happening at the fire districts.
Wow. Okay. Mr. Reno?
Yes, as was mentioned, we have five items of business to take care of this evening. The first, an ordinance authorizing the manager to enter an agreement for the services of a magistrate. And this would replace the current magistrate who was appointed, a judgeship after the past election. An ordinance, B and C pretty much go coincide together. They both apply to the Fairview project. First one being authorizing a change order, change order number two for the contractor, and this is for some of the work, the majority of it being utility relocations and some unforeseen situations which occurred out there. I have kept a pretty good photo log of some of the things that have happened, if you have any further questions, and as well as the inspector that's been out there. And the ordinance, C pertains to the same thing. As a result of some of the downtime and the work that had to be done, the relocation of the water line, the project's running about two weeks over what it was estimated initially. This is to keep a full-time inspector out there. We hope to have the project wrapped up by the end of this week, possibly next week. And I can't wait to get this one behind us. Obviously, they're not going to be able to see, just as a gas company, we will have to have them back out in the spring to do the final grading and restoration, but we'll get everything back to a rough grade and decent through the holidays. And lastly, is a third, the fourth item, is an ordinance amending the Chapter 927 codified ordinance regarding water rate increases. And this is again keeping up with the rate increase that we've received from Youngstown for the last five years. It's been a consistent 8.75 percent increase. The only, the city has only had one increase prior to this, and we're asking for an 8 percent increase this time, and it's 8 percent across the board. There was a change on the original ordinance that went out to everybody. I missed one of the items in retyping the ordinance, but it was added to the, to this ordinance, and it only applied to the capital charts that we put on in the previous ordinance. There was no change in that. And lastly, a motion accepting the final plat, known as Campfield Lots 2561, 2919 through 2943 of the preserved plat nine. And this is basically just housekeeping in our subdivision regulations. After all the work is completed, it goes through the process of getting a letter from the engineer and through the various boards that everything, all the improvements have been done. If you recall, this project, there was a sidewalk remaining and the reserve second, the top coat of the resurfacing that had to be done. We did the sidewalks last year, the resurfacing was done under our program this year. This basically closes out that project and it becomes an official city street from that Just some other things, tomorrow there's meetings at East Gate from the Ohio Department of Transportation, the status review for the sidewalk project on East Main, and that's programmed to go in the spring of next, next year, as well as the North Broad project. Both of those, one, first one's at 10:00 AM, the North Broad is at 10:30. And I'll have a little more information on the North Broad as to where we're at on that one after tomorrow's meeting. And lastly, just a reminder, I don't have a whole lot of information yet, but the Campfield tree lighting is being scheduled or planned for December 6th. I'm not sure of the times yet, but we will be meeting on that tomorrow morning, and I'll get some further details out to everybody and make some announcements on that. But that's all I have.
Any questions for the manager?
Couple of questions. First, on item three, the contract with Tetra Tech. Was that contract originally a fixed amount contract?
Yes, based on a rate schedule. It was a lump sum based on amount of hours with the rate schedule of time. Similar to what contracts we've had on other, other projects. It was not a not to, well, it was a not to exceed based on a rate schedule and a period of time, which we had, I believe, three weeks in the original contract.
Okay, that, that was really the question I was getting at, was whether there was a fixed amount of time specified in the contract for the inspector, or whether that was a lump sum amount.
It was a three-week initial period.
Okay. Another question, where do we stand with regard to the traffic signal project?
Yeah, that I was trying to get an update. The, the biggest holdup on that project, if you recall, that was left back in the spring. Things aren't like they used to be. Before you do, you do a project, stuff was on the shelf waiting to be put out and constructed. Everything on this particular project had to be special ordered. And they did get all the poles in, they've got all the fixtures, there's still a back order on the fiber optic. So the, the scheduled completion date was before Thanksgiving, that's definitely not going to happen. We're hopeful that it gets wrapped up before the end of the year, but they don't have a time certain when the fiber optic line will get here, and that's partially done by Ohio Edison, partially done by the contractor. So our best guess would be we're going to be in the spring of next year before that's all active.
One, one other question, at least that I can think of right now. The streetlights on East Main Street, what's the status on those and the pole replacement and that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's a similar type situation. We were having a difficult time finding a pole that matches our existing, Kincaid, I think, was the manufacturer of those poles, they're no longer in existence. We had a different manufacturer, there's a slight difference between the ones we have on North Broad and East Main and the Village, Village Green. They're trying to locate one through Geller to match what we have out there. And I don't have a time on that as well. I know Todd's been communicating with Cornerstone Electric, who's installed, who's installed for us to try and accomplish that.
Would it be possible to take one of the poles from the far end of, of that circuit and place it where it is now, so we could re-illuminate at least that section and only have dead, or one light out at the far end of the circuit instead of where we're at now?
That's, that's a good thought, I hadn't considered that. One thing that did come up as well, that we may provide a pole to us, the, the Lou Library, as their plan was submitted, the new driveway goes through one of our poles. So we may be able to salvage that one and bring it over there, but in the interim, that's something we're looking at, if we can get that circuit back in, in serious.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the manager?
Yeah, Joe, the streetlights by the Ford dealership that, the pot up there, we had some discussion about that. They were wanting to quit streetlights out for us, maintain the lights.
On Stratford Green? Stratford Green, yeah. I have not gotten a response, but I told them we would need a letter from their association making that request, and they've not responded at this time. That's basically in their report at this point.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Mark, any other items?
A few things, you're going to see some ordinances relative to some changes to the sign ordinance, political signs in particular. I've drafted some changes for the Parks, Rec, and Cemetery Board, Summer Rec Program enrollment process. You know, and, and we tweak that form maybe every other year based on changes in the law, changes that are necessary because of the program itself, and then things that arise that, you know, you're not aware of. So there's, there's some changes relative to specifically rain dates and to disruptive participants. I've been working with Vicki quite a bit on some income tax administration issues relative to non-filers and those kind of issues. The planning and zoning, we were going to commence some discussion relative to new comprehensive plans for the city. We've decided to hold that off until probably summer and begin that process and start figuring out what we're going to do, if we're going to do anything, and how we're going to go about doing it. So that's kind of on the back burner for now. In December, or towards the end of this month, I'll start working on some changes relative to the rules of council to reflect the recent charter amendments, so we'll have those in place by the end of the year. Walter Drain, our codification company, will make the changes in the charter for us, but, and we'll submit those at the end of the year for it to be effective 1/15. But we will need to tweak our rules of council, so I'll have some, you'll be passing a motion in December relative to those issues.
Okay.
Now, do you have any other questions?
If we're going to have those changes prepared, is it possible for us to have a copy of that for the first meeting in December, so we might have some time to look at them in advance of?
Well, my plan is to get them to Joe. Like, I do everything and send them out to you guys to beat them up and do whatever else you're going to do to them, but we'll leave that as a place by the end of December.
Okay, good work. Okay. Thanks, Mark. That's it.
Joe, I did, as you mentioned, I request a brief executive session afterwards, personal matter.
How much did I do, like, oh, Joe, thank you. Item number seven, under recognition of persons desired to speak before council, may I ask you to step forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, and keep your comments brief. I will call you as you've written in order. Donna Bishop?
I'm Donna Bishop, I live at 245 Fairview in Campfield. I see the, the changes, the ordinance changes in the, on the paper, but the construction men have told several of us in the neighborhood today that the project is done in front of my next-door neighbor's house, that it wasn't going forward because the city chose not to move the fire hydrant. All my neighbors up the street are expecting that sewer project to continue up another five or six houses and fix their drainage problem, and now they say, no, the decision was made, the project's done. Is that so?
They're, they're wrapping up what's left to be done. The project does end before that hydrant at the, I don't know what the address is, they're about two doors up from where you're at. The 18-inch that's currently in place has the capacity to manage that portion of the project.
Well, that was the portion, Mike Cabitz's house, and between that and Gus's house, and the other house is where all the flooding continued to occur. And that's all angling right into, you know, it's like dead-ending right there, and then it's supposed to trickle, I guess, their, their 18-inch rate. It wasn't running before. I'm stunned.
The deficiencies were at the intersection of Maple and Fairview and the run all the way down Maple, and that 18 was filling itself up and wasn't taking any capacity. This, the 30 is twice the size with about three times the capacity because of the slope that was increased in the pipe, and that's what's causing a lot of the difficulties hitting utilities. You know, I, I don't know if that was a reason why the other one was put in flat to avoid a lot of this stuff. The 30 was put in as per plan and has much more capacity, it'll be able to accept the flow coming from the 18, which everything is tied into, and drain it at that particular point.
Well, your engineering fellow from whatever name of the company was, he wasn't out there today when they were finishing the job. I didn't see him at all. If he saw it before the dirt was covered up, if he took basic physics in school, he'd have a hard time believing this is going to work. And I don't understand, because last week, I was talking with Joe, I'm trying on his house, and he said, well, it looks like we're going to have to have the water shut off again, because we're going to have to move the fire hydrant. So Friday before I went to my chemotherapy session, I thought, well, I want to take a shower, but I don't want to get in the shower and have the water shut off, so I called down City Hall to find out, no, they've changed their mind. You know, I don't understand this, because we all in the neighborhood understood it was going up further. The, the big cement things that connect everything together are still sitting in neighbors' yards, but suddenly our project ended. And that's a question, I don't know, because, you know, Mr. Reno showed me the drawings and where this thing was going, and all of a sudden it ended. But the way it ended and the way it was put together today, I personally don't see how it's not, how it's going to work. And I can tell you, when my neighbors up the street, when they all figured out, they're going to be really upset, because we thought our problem was solved. You weren't here when we flooded. You weren't here when we super flooded, and the areas that super flooded are now all just going to go into this one pipe, and it comes and it hits the wall just like before. You know, I watched the sewer project for a long time, and if you were going to end it that quick, I sure wish you would end it at, at Silas's house next door to me. You know, instead of endangering my three big trees and the two big trees next door, which chances are, who would have ever thought we were going to have this sub-zero weather with half the root system gone? Don't stand too good a chance of survival. Something to say about, when my other neighbors find out about it, I'm sure they're going to be here at council, because we all were in great understanding that this project was going to completely, it was at least going up to Tom Goodland's house, and now it's not. And the man next door is on vacation, none of his downspouts were hooked into that line because it didn't go all the way to the driveway, it stopped in the middle of the yard. I'm sure this is going to be a continuing discussion. The other thing is, last week, their, last meeting, they were talking about these banners on the poles. And I think they're a great idea for First Night, and I think they're a great idea for the Fourth of July. And I can really see, being involved with many fundraising organizations, I can really see how this can really get out of control, unless it was, and I don't know that we can specifically make it for two things.
Well, you're making my case.
Pardon?
You're making my case, Mr. Reno.
Oh, well, you know, that's the thing that I don't see, and like I say, being involved in many fundraising organizations, I could see this, but I think, you know, it's a great idea, but I, I think it's a legal nightmare for the city.
Well, it's a great idea, but it's hard to draw distinctions between 501(c)(3) organizations or other charitable organizations. You know, it's hard to draw a line between a First Night and a church, or a First Night and a Junior Women's League of Campfield. So that's the difficulty here, no question about it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reno.
Mr. Reno, is the storm sewer project, I mean, are the pipes in as they were designed?
Yes, that's what they're finishing up, and that's the connection point, that they're picking up the, you know, that 18 runs almost up to Indian Trail. Our line would never intended to run all the way to the end of the street, or the 18 is, was, is probably only 10 years old, 15 years old. It has sufficient capacity, and it was designed to take the flow all the way to the end of the system, but again, the bottleneck was, it was put at a flat grade, there's hardly any slope at all to that 18, and when it hit Maple, it was just dead-ended there.
I guess the concern that I was hearing was, I thought Donna was saying that she thought the pipe was going further than what it was, but if that's the way the design was, then they've complied with what their contract was.
Okay, thank you. Frank McKeer?
Good evening, I'm Frank McKeer, I reside at 220 Glenview. Let's talk election results. There were two charter amendments on the ballot. This administration, let me call them the Gang of Seven, opposed them. They passed by a resounding two-thirds majority. Keep in mind, council had to be forced by a potential legal action to send petitions to the Board of Elections. I personally paid the legal fees. Do you feel you're in touch with the electorate? Why would our council oppose legislation that favors accountability, transparency, and oversight? In the 2013 election, there were two charter amendments on the ballot. The Gang of Seven opposed them, both passed. We seem to have a trend going on here. Council is losing its grip on absolute control of the meeting process. In the 2012 election, there were two charter amendments on the ballot. This was the first opportunity for the Gang of Seven to oppose by charter amendments, both passed. The polls were overloaded with council's advocates to no avail. Council has consistently opposed charter amendments in the last three elections. The voters rejected council's wishes on all six amendments. Something is wrong here. Einstein said, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results is a definition of stupidity. Now, that may be, that may be a bit harsh for this situation, but it gives pause for thought. Nowadays, there's a general disregard and low favorability of politicians. We don't need that in Campfield. I ask myself a few questions. Is this administration in touch with the voters? Precing voting does not show that. Will this administration willingly support and implement the results of the last election? The jury is out. Show me. Are the individuals in this administration capable of connecting with the electorate? I have my doubts. So far, the score is six to zero. Is this administration predisposed to look at changes and new ideas? The record is bad. If I were this administration, having been through the last three elections, I would consider resigning. The voters have consistently not sided with you. It's time to move on. Thank you for your time.
Mike Cabitz.
Mike Cabitz, 262 Fairview. This is a resident on the street and the Fairview Maple piping. I don't think we're getting what we, what was engineered. I believe that the 30-inch pipe was supposed to go up near Indian Lake, not all the way up to it, but near it. There's probably two or three manholes, culverts to the south of me that are already setting a place, that were offloaded from the truck, and there's probably a good 10 sections of pipe laying on the side of the street chat. My concern is that from where they stopped, up to probably another 120 feet, they stopped just short of my property. And where the major flooding stopped occurs is the house south of me, where the dip in the road is, that will get its waist-high. You know, I, I think, I'd really wish that considered went up a little bit further. I know a week ago, Monday, they were working out, the fire hydrant is in front of my house, and across the street on the side where they're working, and the operator indicated that they were going to have to move the hydrant. I don't know what changed all of a sudden. I, I can see what, you know, Mr. Reno was saying about the bottleneck being down at the, at Maple, which, you know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that the last design was flawed, that flawed. But I really wish they would go up a couple more houses at least, to take, at least to where that means, where the flooding issue is. Thank you.
I had a meeting scheduled with Representative Tetra Tech, which was having, got canceled, and was going to be tomorrow afternoon. So I'll find out what's going on here, but I, I'm not aware of anything that was changed other than what we talked about tonight.
Yeah, I, I know when we talked earlier on, when they engineered it, you know, they were going to go not all the way up to Indian Lake, but much further up the street. And like I say, they have precast catch bases, you know, already setting up three or four houses up, you know, there's at least two or three of them. So it was indication that they were going to go further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for that information.
You're welcome.
Number eight, under full visits, there is none. Under new business items, A, ask provisions section 4.05, the charter, I move the dispense for the requirement of two readings to the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the subpoena's first read. Do you have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Have we done a purpose call the roll?
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, and ask for division in section 4.05, the charter, the city of Campfield, I move the council dispense for requirement of full reading of proposed ordinance and authorize by its title only, or the second?
Second.
Mr. Dragich, discussion. Have we done a purpose call the roll?
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the services of a magistrate. I move for passage.
Thank you, Mr. Tisch, do the second.
Second.
Mr. Morbe, discussion. Purpose call the roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a question.
Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Reno, can you explain to the audience, or Mr. Fortunato, can you explain to the audience how the fees are set for payment of the magistrate?
In the agreement? I don't have a copy of the agreement, but.
Yeah.
Thank you. The agreement is set for the magistrate's services at $125 per hour, and that would be paid on a monthly basis, only to the extent that the magistrate is utilized. And again, the only reason this is done is that in the absence of the mayor, that we could continue to have courts. That might be, you know, one, one time a year, it might be longer, but that's how it'd be set. And I think, you know, we didn't have a magistrate appointed here for a long time. I think it's a really prudent thing to do. And soon to be done, Russo was our magistrate. And this is, the contract, I believe, is going to be with Charlie Burke, who was a partner of his, who had expressed interest.
Thank you.
What kind of was Rob Russo used during his time in Rockland, Mark?
Maybe two, three at the most.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not even sure, was that many? Two, you know, I certainly recall him being here at least twice, but that's over a number, a number of years.
It has, but yes, it has.
But it's, but it's nice. It's nice to have somebody who's been serving.
Very good.
I can speak for this year, yeah, he has worked twice, and the reason he did that is I was not certified yet.
Okay.
So one time he did it, and I sat next to him, another time, he did it by himself, but twice, and that was a necessity, I was not certified to sit.
Okay, very good. And the number is that much, number? Number?
2014-51.
Thank you very much for that, Patty. Item B, as provisioned in Section 4.05, the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move that dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Have been none of the clerkies called a roll?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And as provisioned in Section 4.05, the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized by its title only. Do I have a second on that? Second. Mayor, discussion. Have been none of the clerkies called a roll?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Dragish.
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance authorizing change order number two for Bertolini Trucking Incorporated and to declare such ordinance an emergency, Fairview Maple Stormwater Improvement Project.
Thank you. Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. If not, the clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Thank you. And the number is?
2014-52.
Thank you, Patty. Item C is as provisioned in Section 4.05, the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move that dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read. Do I have a second? Second. Mayor, discussion. Have been none of the clerkies called a roll?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And as provisioned in Section 4.05, the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move that council dispense with the requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized by its title only. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Dragish, discussion. Have been none of the clerkies called a roll?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Thank you.
Mr. Morbe.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing a contract modification number one for Tetra Tech Inc. for the Fairview Maple Stormwater Management Project. I move for passage.
Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Dragish, discussion.
Yeah, Joe, this is an amount of approximately $5,500.
Yes, correct.
Okay, $5,500. It's like $5,300 and something. All right, you're caught. $5,358. I got it, Joe.
You found it?
Yeah.
Any more?
$5,358.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? If not, the clerkies call a roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Thank you. And the number is?
2014-53.
Thank you, Patty. Item D, as provisioned in Section 4.05, the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move that dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the San Ponce first read. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Morbe, discussion. Have been none of the clerkies called a roll?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And as provisioned in Section 4.05, the Charter of the City of Canfield,